Before we get started, we have she chairs with people that put texts in. Everybody that wants to speak, sign your name and put an X here. Proven minutes of July 17th, the board of the board meeting. The motion's imminent.
I'll make a motion, we have 50 minutes.
I'll second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Close? Proven minutes of August 7th, special board meeting.
So move.
I'll second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Close? Proven vouchers.
We have a general fund of eighty-two thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars forty-four cents, water fund fifty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars nine cents, sewer fund a hundred and ten thousand seven hundred twelve dollars sixty-eight cents, and a capital fund of eight hundred twenty-one thousand six hundred and four dollars fifty cents. And Joe, or I?
Okay, I just want to say this. Capital fund, eight hundred twenty-one thousand dollars, six hundred and four dollars and fifty cents. That's what the village has had to spend since the July 10th storm. So we're not immune from this either. We're hoping to be able to submit this to FEMA, but it's going to take us three to five years to recoup that back to FEMA. But that's what that eight hundred twenty-one thousand, that was just July 10th. That's not even counting what we've just dealt with here in August.
Then we had to pay upfront when we signed the vouchers and I made the motion that we pay the vouchers.
I'll put in my motion. Home favor?
Aye.
Close? Is Matt Serbini here today?
Yes.
Groundwater well development project, that's kind of on hold right at the moment, isn't it?
Yeah, we've still haven't been able to get anywhere with the consultant. Of course, you know, he passed away, so we're dealing with his partner. We're probably heading towards signing up another consultant to go the next step. And I want to meet with them and then meet with you and them together. Make sure we're all on same, on board with developing those wells up at the water treatment plant.
I'd like to step in for just a second on this also. That if we develop those ground water wells, it's going to help an awful lot because during the storm situation, we've had to spend a lot more money on extra chemicals at our water treatment plants as a counter to all the pollerine water that we've had. And that was pretty much the money that we just had to spend.
Yep, yep, and you have a surface, you have two, you have a surface water source and a groundwater source now. And you tend to expand the groundwater source to get, you know, move yourself away from having to treat the young pond of the surface water source, which is subject to the leaves and pine needles and runoff and everything like everything else. And it overflowed during the last storms, I'm sure, yeah.
LED street lighting conversion program. We should be getting our final invoice on that here. We just had an email from the millia from the York Power Authority. But on the good side, we received their final incentive payment of sixty-one thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty cents. So basically, all together, for the LED lights that went up in the village, we've received about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in incentives to change those lights over. So any changes, we've been working on a whole lot of those, I don't feel any time out on that at all?
Yeah, I mean, we've come up with a tentative final draft that's been sent to all the board members. Just this week, we added a few more things to do with water prevention and such. So my suggestion is that we probably hold a special meeting of the board over it all together. Because of course, we don't really have time to go through the whole thing in a regular board meeting. That's where we're at there.
But I also think, don't get down, we should make a motion for Brittany when she gets back to get ahead and hold a heat code and give us a estimate of what we have.
We got to get a call out on the cost of it.
What it's going to cost us to get the code brought up to date because there is grant monies out there. We can go after it, but we're going to need a cost estimate to be able to go after the grant money and pay for the upgrades.
Correct.
Veterans Park, basically, we need a resolution. We're working on a project, we want to build a veteran's park. We're also working with the DRI, we're working with New York Parks. We do have a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from New York Parks to do work up there. We'd like to put a splash pad in there, we'd like to put brand-new restrooms in there, proper restroom, walking trail around, we need drainage up there bad, talk about water, we've got it up on the back. It's been bad even before we had these drains. And in our deed, it states that we can't put any permanent buildings up there, which means we can't put a restroom. But it's also says the board can do a resolution to change that. And so that's what I have here, a resolution. Basically, it says approving and authorizing veterans memorial park improvements. Whereas the village board for the village of Lawwell, New York is considered making a number of improvements to lands located on Parkway Drive and commonly referred to as Veterans Memorial Park. And whereas improvements to Veterans Memorial Park would include construction of an ADA compliant walking path, a surface for ADA accessibility in front of the bandstand, a new splash pad, restrooms, and the like. And whereas the village intends to use funding in part at least provided by its downtown revitalization grant. And whereas the village board serves as league agency for purposes of coordinating review of the action under CEPCOR and issue a negative declaration for the overall project to honor it on May 15th, 2024. And whereas a portion of the proposed improvements consists of public restrooms, a new splash pad, proposed to be situated upon lands within Veterans Memorial Park, which are originally conveyed by the town of Lawwell to the village of Lawwell pursuant to quick plane deed dated July 11th, 1961, and recorded in the Lewis County Clerk's Office on May 1st, 1971, in Book of Beads 115, page 381. And whereas a portion of those lands are identified as Lawwell Village Lot B, consisting of 3.81 acres plus or minus, and which authorize certain future development or activities on Lot B with certain conditions and limitations. Whereas in abundance of caution, the village considers the conditions and limitations upon Lot B and determined to confirm that public restrooms and a splash pad are appropriate upon the portion of Veterans Memorial Park identified as Lot B, are consistent with those legislative purposes activities or improvements that are acceptable to the village's board and town board of Lawwell. And whereas the village research has revealed that the town board of Lawwell pursuant to Resolution 12, 2008, rescinded and modified restrictive covenants and underlying deed to the village of Lawwell confirming that the placement of playground equipment within and upon Veterans Memorial Park is consistent with the nature and character of the park and will not be out of place or disruptive and will continue to honor war veterans and therefore we remove the restriction on playground activities and equipment within Veterans Memorial Park on Lot B with a day as a native area of end. Whereas a post splash pad is therefore permitted use to Veterans Memorial Park. Whereas the town board of Lawwell has reviewed and considered development and installation of restroom facilities within Veterans Memorial Park on Lot B and finds the same to be consistent with the nature and character of Veterans Memorial Park and has agreed to provide its consent and require thereof a written agreement between the respective municipal boards. And whereas the village's boards can consider all above and these terms to proceed. Now therefore, be resolved by the village's board or the village of Lawwell that the foregoing creations are incorporated herein and made a part and set forth herein. The mayor for the village of Lawwell, the village clerk for the village of Lawwell, the attorney for the village of Lawwell, their respective agents and employees are authorized to proceed promptly to memorize this agreement. If necessary, to enable the construction development and use a portion of Veterans Memorial Park to include public restrooms and a splash pad and make all necessary steps to main eligibility for DRI grant funds and such in those as authorized. Sign all documents and make all steps necessary applied to this resolution. This resolution should take effect immediately. We need a motion to move that forward.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
This also has to be ruled called vote? Myself, yes. Dan?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Chuck? I mean, Tim?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Dan, do you have any information you can give us on anything still in process right now?
We met on the downtown revitalization project this week. Tim and I attended, with everything going on at times, it was very, very light. Final applications are due in on 30th of this month. There's, I guess, three or four in and several others expected to be in. The LDC, or the LDC, the core committee will be meeting on September 5th to go over all of those and begin the process of review. So that's, that's pretty much where that's at. This resolution we just passed has to be done Friday so that we can, we can proceed with what we want to do in Veterans Park. So that's, that was the extent of the meeting, the meeting lasted about an hour. And that, that, that meeting is open to the public. I believe it's still going to be in the library at 9:00 AM. Thank you.
Bonding from flood repairs, but basically what this is, is, you know, we did bond resolution on our August 7th meeting. But in order to throw all the paperwork together and do all the work for the banks and everything, usually we hire municipal solutions. And this is just to authorize me to sign the agreement with municipal solutions to handle all the bond stuff for the village on that. One point, two-fives million for restoration, and we have to fail. We need a motion to authorize me to sign that.
I'll still move.
I'll second.
Home favor? Close? Okay, Brittany's got to transfer some monies around, so we need to do another resolution. This one's for a new police vehicle. This is authorization for expenditure of capital reserve funds from village of Lawwell General Police Reserve Fund. Whereas at a regular meeting of the village board of the village of Lawwell, Lewis County, New York, on the August 21st, 2024, 4:00 PM, whereas the meeting was called to order by me and I'm going to get the trustees. They said that it is, whereas the village of Lawwell previously established a resolution of General Police Reserve Fund. In accordance with Section 6C of the General Municipal Law, whereas the village board was supposed to use a portion of the amount of forty-five thousand dollars of that fund to purchase a new vehicle. Now therefore be resolved that by the village board of the village of Lawwell, that a sum not to exceed forty-five thousand should be expended from the police general reserve fund to purchase the new vehicle. And it's further resolved that this resolution shall be subject to progressive referendum in accordance with Article 6C of the municipal law. And then we need a motion to move that one forward.
I'll still move.
I'll second.
This also is going to be ruled called vote? Myself, yes. Dan?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yeah.
Tony?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, normally, we'd go into new business, but see how we got two people here tonight. A lot of you want to speak. We'll make an exception tonight and we'll start off with those people that would like to speak. And looking on the list here, I guess the first one is Zeke. Zeke said, ask him.
Yes, Zeke said, I'm my name, I live on the bottom of East King Street.
Just, I will remind everybody, excuse me, no, let you start over. I will remind everybody, you have five minutes, that's it.
Okay, and I've been flooded out four times since July. And most of my questions have been answered by Paul. But I would like to address the board on what I've witnessed, the reasoning that my backyard and everybody else's backyard in our neighborhood is flooding. And that's the reason that my cellar is flooded. This line that goes under the street that the village or somebody just put in end of spring, early summer, was too small. I witnessed, I have pictures, that that line that comes underneath that was right full of water coming under the street, the sluice way. On the entry of that, the water was above the curb. So that tells you right there that that sluice way is not big enough. It's not big enough, backs up, floods the creek, next to below my neighbor. Comes over and it floods everybody's backyard. Then it fills my cellar and the rest of the neighbors. And Paul told me that they are definitely going to do something about it. But I want you guys to know that I want something done about it before winter. Hopefully, it'll do something. Because I can't, I can't even go away on a weekend worrying about somebody flooding out that then I got to have somebody come down and watch my cellar. So.
Brendan, Bill, Dish Patel?
Dish. Dish or Dish Patel?
Yeah, I see.
Dish. Dish.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I wanted to speak, I thought.
Yeah, yeah. My name's Bill Dish, and I live right next to Zeke, 7555, State Street, bottom of the hill there by Stewart's. And like Zeke was talking to, I would like to see, well, they stuck that little pipe in there. I used to be able to walk under the underpass from one side of the road to the other side of the road. And I'm not a rocket scientist, but I knew right from day one, I said, that's never going to work, like what I said. Because I'll tell you what's happening. Soon as it storms, you get a bad storm, branches and stuff come down to that culvert, it's about that big around. It plugs it up, it's like a beaver dam. End of my driveway, the water flows right out the end of the driveway, down the street, across the road, flooding people that never got flooded before. So what I would like to see is do, and it wouldn't cost a lot of money. I know they make saws that will cut through concrete and rebar. The center of that, cut it right open and open it up. And also on the other side of that road where that pipe this big is, they put two little pipes that goes in smaller. And one is completely plugged full of stuff. It's not handling that, and I knew it wouldn't from day one. So I would like to use to fix it as soon as possible. Because, you know, I've been there 10 years and it's never, and we've had storms like the other, the last one, it was like, what, three inches of rain? It's like, that shouldn't have been no trouble at all. One sun pump wouldn't even fill up, keep up with the water coming in my cellar. I have to have two. And the first storm, we had the big one, I had that fire timer coming from me and a lot of other people.
We thanked God for them.
Yeah, thanked God for them.
But we lost.
But that wouldn't be that hard of a fix. For now, until you come up with a permanent solution, just cut that out of there.
And we lost thousands.
We lost, yeah, thousands of dollars of, because our cellar, because we had a dry cellar. It was, we had shelves stacked with all kinds of stuff. We lost, I can't imagine how much we lost, up in the thousands. And I'm not a rich man, so, you know. Thank you.
Charles Dibble?
Yes, my concerns are, as the two here have spoken, many of us in the village. Joe, you know where I live, 8411 Boswick Street. And when my event started, it was a storm drain that I wasn't aware of when I bought the property that went down and blew my cellar. We made some repairs there, and then this last time, she split the cellar wide open, filled the cellar and lost everything that was inside of that. But a lot of that rainwater that you see that goes down to that ice hole comes through my backyard and five blocks up above me, and I think some from the hospital. So I know we're limited on funds, and so I don't know if those funds come from the state or the government. But this village is, many of us here in the city know that it's pretty serious, serious trouble. And my big concern is what happens come January, we have spring thaw, and these waters come into our cellars and our backyards and things of that nature. And I'm sure it's not just me, it's everyone else. We all live in this village, and it's a mess. We got to do something with the infrastructure or rerouting the storm drain. I mean, we all know in behind the hospital that aren't laying up above, a lot of it's coming from there. And then you've got the southern part of the county that's coming there. Downtown, whatever, it's flowing in down there too. But I don't know where you stand, I don't know where you're planning on getting your funds, but something has to be done, something has to be done. And that's, I'm sure they're actually feel the same way.
Yes.
And again, my backyard, you just created a lot of, destroyed again. Front yard, my neighbors here, their driveway is messed up. And I see they're making efforts across the street, they're putting in grade over there, but I think they got to catch the problem up behind them. Somewhere they got to catch it, they got to divert that water.
That's nice, but I had to say, thank you. Well, I will tell you, tomorrow at 9 o'clock, the municipalities are all getting together to see Steve.
That's excellent.
To try and come up with a solution.
So.
It's not just the village's solution, we're looking at stuff up there by the hospital and outside around.
And many of us in the village have driven around and we see where the issues are coming. But we definitely need a coalition of engineers and the county's got to get that, and the state, the state with the town. I don't know where Hoco, Hoco, whatever name it stands on this, but she needs to get back to say, hey, look, you guys need some funding. You guys are in a serious situation. And from an environmental standpoint, they say these oceans are warming. This is a new trend, we're going to see more and more of it. And if we want Lawwell to prosper with a younger generation growing up, we have to do something with that infrastructure. We can't hand this on down to them. It's common sense, we're getting something. We just can't let it go. I know it's going to cost a lot of dollars, but the longer we keep kicking that can down the road, it's just going to get more and more expensive. That's what the fines, I see you mentioned that earlier, but there must be some state investment on you that they got to understand they got to help on.
Well, there is federal money, that's what I was talking about, the FEMA. But eight-hundred and some thousand that we had spent out.
Which isn't very much.
We can submit that to FEMA, but the problem is it takes three to five years to get that back. But we have to pay the contractors now.
The thing of it is, is I don't know if we have three to five years. So I mean, I don't know how you, it could be like that. You take the whole village and everybody else and start marching down on the Capitol or something, I don't know.
The bigger problem, the bigger problem we have, Mr. Dibble, is that it's going to much exceed our bonding limit.
I know, I, I, you told me the dollars, and I know where we are, and that doesn't fix the problem.
No.
Bonding money from the state, the state's not going to do it, they need federal government. I know there's channels that you need to go through, but something needs to be expedited and done quickly. On a short note, I'm sure the fire department's getting pretty sick of coming over to my house, pumping out my backyard and my cellar. But I want to give them big credit, because when I call, they're within five minutes, and they're pumping along with my two pumps. And my hat goes out to those guys, they're, I owe them big time.
Okay, next up, Arvin Rovey?
I'm Arvin Rovey, and I live here on Park Ave. I have another property up on Dan Street. I actually lost the entire property because of drainage, not being able to handle the water. So I just wanted to let you guys know that I lost my entire property. It's not worth, it's not worth anything right now. I will just say, I do not understand, most of what I wanted to ask is, has been said already. But I do want to state, I don't understand why a culvert that was big enough to walk through was replaced with a culvert about this big. That's one example of what was done in the rest of the village, if that's what they did.
Where was that done?
At my house.
Our house.
The sluice way was talking about, that's.
Now, I don't want to get into it, but if you were to size that, the only ways where it's a little bit smaller, that pipe literally slides through and touches the sides. If you were to draw a square and to draw a circle in that square, it's only going to be the top corners and the bottom corners that you're losing the rest of the pipe. But we'll be looking at that, so.
No, no, this was, before the pipe was in, you could walk, you could walk right through it. The whole culvert from one side to the other side.
I could say.
That was wide.
So yeah, we just wanted to state, you know, again, you know, why was, and did they do that other places? There are other places where we had larger drains and they replaced them with smaller ones. And if so, why was that even approved? The last statement I have is, the question is, who's going to pay for this? I realize the village and, you know, county, state will be giving help, but what about the individual owners such as myself, who has lost my entire property? Who's going to pay for that? And, you know, again, why did this happen?
I think it's, I think it's income, the problem with that, I think it's income guided. But here in state, you can apply for up to fifty thousand dollars worth of damage for your own personal property. That the governor made available.
Which excludes the.
When I speak on behalf of what you just stated, I mean, we have those monetary losses. You lost everything, but some of us that have made it through like myself, what's that done to the value of my house? You know, I've got, that's 150, 180, that I would have a tough time selling for 20 or 30 now. You know, losing 20,000, I had a cellar that was unfinished, operated in Rome, Rome, St. Boe.
I thought we're down.
I wouldn't want to be in your seat.
Same deal for me.
Okay, next, Michael Lefter? Wait a minute, yeah?
Get them know that of the Five Street project, there was no downsizing in pipes. Everything was laid up stone, and it was this, basically laid up squared stone. That pipe that was put in there for the Five Street project is a 48-inch pipe. That box that was in there before was a four-by-four box. There, it's the same exact diameter, but it's better flow. It's a smooth round pipe on the inside. That's, I'm talking about all piping on the Five Street project. Nothing on that Five Street project was downsized.
Can people hear that?
Ours was. Ours didn't have a pipe in it, it was an open culvert, it was with big old stones each side. It was like a big, open, concrete issue.
The diameter of the pipe that was put in there, yes, the diameter of the pipe is still the same size as that opening. The upper corners and the bottom corners, we hear that it's wrong. It's, you're, yes, you are losing that space. I, I totally get what the dishes are saying. But you have to look at it at another point, we've never had that amount of water. And like I had told Zeke and the dishes, that water that was coming down through the town was making that creek flow more than it ever has. Okay, so that's all I got to say, thank you.
That, that last storm was only 3.7.
Right, exactly.
I know this village has had that type of storm in the past. And I respect everything that everyone's saying. The Band-Aids and the fakering has got to stop. We really got to dig in and get some engineers, and I know it's going to be expensive, but again, the federal government's not like that, something needs to be done.
Can I answer the question of that lady that was talking?
That was Paul.
Yeah.
That was Paul that needs.
Okay, sorry, my hearing's, I was used to be. But that, yeah, that smaller pipe, the opening was big, but that smaller pipe is what I'm saying is plugging up. Where the big stuff, a lot of that stuff went right straight through and a lot more. You can't tell me with that pipe, you've got an opening this big, you know, this high, that wide with water going through, reducing it down, concrete that hole in, all of it except for the pipe. You can't tell me that as much water is going to go through that little hole. You can't tell me that, uh, as much water's gonna go through that little hole as what might through that hole.
That's downsizing.
Yeah, that's downsizing as I ever saw it. It wasn't like they turned it off. Thank you.
Okay, Mike Lefter?
Yeah, my name is Mike Lefter, I live at seventy-five thirty-eight Cascade Avenue in the village. Um, I'm here today to bring up the mayor's, there was a, before, the village board. Um, it's, it's, about the heads at the corner of Store Street and Cascade Avenue. Landowner owns the home, there's a violation of code head block. That's supposed to be eight feet higher and it's, it's gotta be at least twenty-four inches, wait for it to hurt. Uh, this has not been addressed. Um, nothing's been done about it. And this, the intersection, if you drive the school bus around that corner, it's a lot worse than what, what the first grocery we got rebuilt. I can tell you that, it's like, sorry schools. Uh, you gotta really pay attention there. Well, hopefully nobody gets hurt, nothing happens before it's corrected. And we've been dealing with the Los County Code Enforcement at the courthouse, uh, about the height of grass on our street. And we're up there last week with the code enforcement office, and they don't wanna be bothered anymore. They have more important things to do, which I agree with, they do. And Tim knows, because there's a lot more important things than raising a lawsuit and cutting the grass. So, last week, after two years, they said it's not their problem anymore, it's the village's problem. So, code is supposed to write letters to the village, something about you guys gonna handle the lawn maintenance. That's what it was told up there. I don't know. So, we're always supposed, we're all supposed to obey by the law, nobody should be treated any different, but apparently it is. So, we just, we'd like to know who is taking care of lawn maintenance. Courthouse says, they're out and they won't be bothered anymore, because they basically said, some of your laws are stupid. That's exactly what they said to us, up there, exact word for word, right, making that up. So, we need to address this, uh, so, I was, uh, I did do a FOIL request yesterday to see what the memorandum, memorandum is between the village and the county for code enforcement. I wanna see what that reads. And, uh, I just, if I can get a written request back to me, electronic, verbal, comment within seven business working days on this matter. Thank you.
Is there Diane Purvines here?
I'm here.
With a question mark, if you want to...
I, well, I was hoping that somebody else would ask the question that I wanted to ask. Um, I've looked on West State Street for thirty years, um, and I know that first storm, the seven inches of water, that, that's given. I mean, nothing could handle that. Um, but this last one kinda really turns your lights on a little bit as to, I mean, this street turned into a water park like everybody else's did, um, and we watched dump...
You're right there by the hospital, right?
Just down from it, yeah.
Because I will tell you, just yesterday, the hospital found a problem up there on top of the hill. They changed out a large pipe that was pumped full of rocks. And that might be one of the reasons you were getting more over your way.
Was that on the corner of the driveway?
It was up on the Upper York Highway.
Up, up behind, okay.
They just replaced a great big culvert like yesterday because they found one that was...
Where's that running?
Yeah, where's that running?
So, I mean, people are worried, they might be sorry about that.
Is there a, where does the storm drain go from the water that comes down off from that hill, though? I mean...
You're not, that storm drain was put in years ago, it, it goes under the road, down past, down the Two Shacks, comes out on the Summit Ave, goes down across everybody's yards, down Fairview Drive, down across Stewart, it went under his house, they were talking about earlier. Makes its way to Boswick Street, and then from Boswick Street, yeah.
I guess, I'm still kind of confused because I, I guess that part of it, but it... So, there's...
She's on the other side of West Street.
Yeah, we're on the way.
That's the same water source.
Yeah.
Water source, it's going both ways, it's going down West Street and it's going down across under twenty-sixth.
So, it's just not, but you're saying that they fixed the problem, so...
I'm not saying they fixed it, I'm saying they found one problem. They found one problem there yesterday. And that was that one big pipe, and they changed that out. But like I say, they're, everybody is meeting to try and...
Yeah, well, hopefully...
And one of the reasons for the meeting is to try and design new systems, but, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just...
No, no.
They did find one problem in that area of the village, so...
Okay, thank you.
Luke Rose?
Hello, I'm Luke Rose, I live on Jefferson Street. I have two issues, um, I was talking to an officer of Boswick Hill, and I have major flooding. Took out three water heaters, furnace, the village comes in, or the fire department came in and hunted out the first storm along with our three pumps running that couldn't keep up. But we have a village drain that runs a hundred percent underneath my property. And they say the drain comes off of the hospital and the Rice Road. And it's washed out my blacktop driveway three feet down. The corner of my garage, I believe, is starting to seep. You can't expect me to repair the driveway, put in another blacktop driveway, and one month later wash it out again. So, it has to be taken care of, but it has to be taken care of by the village. I can't be putting in a driveway every year. Tenants had to move out till we got the, 'cause there was sparks flying downstairs and everything from the hot water heaters floating and then water coming out. So, yeah, it needs to be taken care of. Second issue is, I got a letter from the code enforcers saying I'm operating my business illegally. I was told to come to the village meeting. I have neighbors, bishops and cushions that think I'm operating illegal. And according to, I think you, Tim, you think I am too.
I'm sure, like you said.
Um, but what about all the other businessmen, what am I doing different than them?
We had this conversation.
Right, and I'm saying it publicly. What am I doing different than Snowden, three-foot trailer, Doug Hano, you know, all the other businessmen and novel? Because I park my vehicles at home and I have my equipment there and a garage, you know, I'm not allowed to work on them. It's something I don't think you really wanna open up, I don't wanna be that guy. But you'll be sending out a lot of letters to other businessmen. Um, I'm not operating illegal, according, maybe according to some of your laws, but then everybody is. My business is no longer addressed to Laualto. It's out, it's a Laualto address, but it's outside the village. So, you're saying I can't park my personal trucks there that are in my personal name, like everybody else does? And the family member of Bishop's also has his company truck sitting there with a chemical sprayer on it. Should I start taking pictures of that, turning them in? You know, um, it's not fair, I'm not gonna be single dog, at all. I can't help it if they don't like me, never did nothing to, to, to them that I know of. But they are single myself, and I don't appreciate it, and, uh, I'm gonna fight it. And I invited you to come anytime you want, preferably in the morning, tell us what we're...
Yeah, I did visit your property.
When we're gone, when we, as far as business goes, no one comes to my place and services or sales. We do no sales, businesses.
And I told you that on the phone, but, anytime I went by your place, I didn't see an issue.
Right, but I, I'd like you to come when they say we're being dangerous or making noise. 'Cause on, on my map that I have on my phone, I don't know how to date it.
You're gonna have to call me then.
Well, I said it's seven, eight o'clock in the morning. Seven, eight o'clock in the morning, that's, that's when we're up. You know, and there's no ordinance, as far as I know, on Laualto, anytime of day. But we have been, before this issue, always tried to be quiet before seven o'clock anyways. But there's also a lot of businesses, and I don't know how to date the map is, but the car wash is residential, Urbaniacs is residential. I know there's different zoning laws, but how are they residential? You know, like, the big car washes, because there's a residential house there.
Wouldn't be residential out there, maybe the house, that portion there.
Well, the whole property says residential on my map, on the, my map here. Urbaniacs, that's a different type of business, but people come. Um, if they're complaining because we have extra vehicles sitting up, my son, and my son's addtness is on this house, or on this letter, I'm not sure why. He don't like that we have extra vehicles sitting there, they're not touching the road. Don't think there's a law in town that says how many vehicles we can have on our property. I care for my wife, so I have caregivers coming, and nurses coming, so there's always vehicles up my house, extra vehicles.
You gotta understand, I'm not against it, okay?
Okay, first you gotta fight for me too, is what I'm saying.
I just told you what the law said, okay? If in fact, somebody didn't push it, put it that way, it's not gonna be me.
But there's times when common sense has to trump some stuff here.
We had a good conversation on the phone.
We did, but...
Okay, Gina Judd?
Hi, my name's Gina Judd, and I live on State Street, and, um, I'm not, I'm sorry about all the flooding, but we're having some issues up on State Street, and that is involving Urbaniacs Photography. Um, a new owner has come in, and he has applied to put a retail store, convenience store there. And he's the owner of the Smoke, Smokers Corner. He'll be moving that business into the Urbaniacs, and my one issue with it, I have several issues I wanted to talk to you about. I'm here to ask for your help, um, because I think that it is zoned incorrectly. Um, I have the building permit for Urbaniacs, and he was allowed to put a home occupation photo studio, not a convenience store retail. He never had any inventory or cost of goods sold. Um, and so I think the classification of this application is incorrect. Also, when you do look at our zoning laws for retail and office and business, it would more, Urbaniacs would be more underneath the office and business classification, again, because he did not hold inventory. Um, he didn't have cost of goods sold. I also looked at our laws regarding, um, going, um, when we're considering to act on special permits, because they're saying that this is a special permit, because we are zoned residentially. Um, and so we do not want a business in there. The planning board should consider the public health, safety, welfare, comfort and convenience of the public in general, and the residents of proposed developments, and the residents of the immediate surrounding area. And we're also supposed, supposed to consider the compatibility of the proposed use of the character with the surrounding air, neighborhood, and in harmony with the comprehensive plan for the community. I did a FOIL request, and this gentleman's, um, place of business has had incident reports of criminal activity. Um, teenagers are going into his place of business at fifteen and seventeen years of age, and they're stating that the store does not ID anyone that comes in, and they allow kids to buy whatever they want. Oneida Sheriff has had some of this information also. Um, there was three different search warrants in his current place of business, and now he is trying to bring that place of business into a residential area, and I don't think that's appropriate. The trees, um, I'm not sure. Also, I am concerned about foot traffic, loitering, and, um, having more cars come in there. That was not what Urbaniacs was permitted to do, and I don't think that we need that. Um, at Campbell Street, we have children that are free to play. And bringing in this type of business into our community, one, I think is harmful to our community. I think it's not supporting our law enforcement, it's creating more work for them. Um, and it's not a safe place for our children. And so I'm asking for your help with this, I really think it needs to be classified differently. Um, I also wa, question like hours of operation, what signage he's allowed to put up there? I would like more information, and the residents of Campbell Street would like more information regarding that. And then I, my second, um, request to you guys is, I feel really bad that I'm reacting to something and not being proactive. And so I would like our village to start being more proa, proactive in what we do here. And in the laws, in the zoning laws, I think they need to be more detailed of what we want allowed in our community so that it's a safe place for families. I love the small business, but the small businesses that are successful here are the ones that add value and not take away. And I think this convenience store that he's proposing, based on his record, does not sell milk and eggs. It's going to be selling, um, things that are not appropriate for a residentially zoned area. And so I need your help. I would, I don't know if we can do, I know there's a stop order because of the construction in the building, but I would like a stop order on having a, um, convenience store in that area.
I can say is, we have been looking into it. Because, like, have you looked at, uh, we're talking about the smoke shop part of it? There's absolutely no way he could move that smoke shop down there according to section two oh one, five ninety-six. Deal strictly with smoke shops?
Nobody can tell me what inventory he's gonna have there. And why is he allowed to have an inventory business when it was just zoned as a household, uh, a home-based photography studio? Urbaniacs did not sell frames, they didn't sell, it was a service, it wasn't inventory.
My interpretation of the law is, say, you bought the house and you wanted to move in there and open a photo shop. Where it's been less than a year, you could go in there and open that photo shop back up. But, as far as a change of venue, which is what he wants to do, no, that's not allowed. And plus, on top of that, it's in a residential area, so it's not allowed.
Okay, there's no stop order for the convenience?
The problem is there, we gotta make sure the planning board, the zoning board, and the codes office knows that, and push on.
Okay, so you're, you're gonna help us with that?
Yes. That, that permit that you have has not been approved. It's just a piece of paper right now, so... We will, you know, as far as we can, put it that way. Head up? Okay. Thank you, wait for coming, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. I think that was everybody that wanted to speak.
I didn't get a chance to speak, I put an X on the paper. Byron Thompson?
Huh?
Byron Thompson?
Huh?
Thompson?
Oh, you didn't put an X on it?
I thought I did.
Okay, go ahead, thanks.
My name's Byron Thompson, I'm meeting a lot of people here for the first time. I live on five three five one Fairview Drive, and we experienced flooding twice to the point of, last time was fifteen inches in the basement, first time was about eight, ten, which, there isn't a lot of difference. So, we had a fully carpeted finished basement, sheet rock walls, lost pretty much everything. Um, still going through that, but I was online this morning just looking at this thing. We have a problem, as Chuck Dibble stated, um, and I was wondering what we could do about it. I have a brother-in-law that fought off, um, a landfill committee down in, um, south of here, down by Utica, period. And they formed a advisory committee, uh, citizens advisory committee that, um, gets a lawyer, gets a few important people with educations. What we need here is a civil engineer to look this structure over that is not biased politically or any other way, to get in there and look at this thing and tell us what's going on. So, I got on this morning, we were talking last night on the phone for over an hour with my brother-in-law, and he's was successful in completing what he does. His title is a civil engineer, he's a professional engineer. He's, uh, got the eight years under his belt and, uh, knows what he's talking about. He took a look the first time we flooded up on Fairview Drive. He took a drive up on, uh, by the hospital, he goes, this should not have happened, period. And I said, well, I'm, I'm a machinist by trade, I know nothing about this. He stated that they should have a catch basin up there somewhere, either, either across the road in the Two Shacks or, or back of old Purvines' house out there. And let it filter out over a period of days after it rains nine inches in one day or two days. And it, what he was stating was other things like running a big pipe down over to the East Road and down to Black River and all that. Makes good sense. What I'm, what I'm proposing is somebody could get together as a committee, maybe this group right here, I don't know if they can do it. I have some phone numbers, they could call this, the, uh, um, core... I have some phone numbers, they could call this, the, uh, um, Corps of, Army Corps of Engineers, and they will come in here if it's presented to them correctly, and they will come in and look at this for free. And they will maybe even fix it for free. They're allowed seven million dollars to build, and according to my brother-in-law, it costs about five million to build a retention pond up there, the way they could do it. And, I don't know, I've never seen it done, I don't even really know what he's talking about. Like I say, I'm a machinist by trade, that's a long ways from civil engineer. But I've worked with a lot of engineers, some of them are really good, some of them make mistakes. I don't know what's happened here, but it looks like somebody's gotta back up a little bit, maybe they're in way over their head or something like that. But if we had some good people come in and handle this type of thing, the first thing online when you look up Army Corps of Engineers is they handle flooding. And that's one of the big things on their list. And they also take and handle bridges that get knocked out and things like that. So they're into it. They have the people to do it, they have the equipment to do it, and they're backed by the government. That's all I'd like to say. Maybe if you want some numbers, I got some right here. Um, a few phone calls. I know some lawyer friends, but my friends are all old, they're either old or dead now. Um, but if I had the right contacts, I'm sure this could get pulled off where you get a good answer.
The only thing I would ask is like you, what you're talking about and up there at the hospital. I wish some of you people would go to the county meetings and discuss, and go to some of the hospitals.
Next place I'm headed.
Because they're the, they're the ones that designed that up there. That, that section of hospital is actually on town property, it's not even in the village allowed.
I can't argue that. I, I don't know that.
I mean, we're looking into it, like I said, we got that meeting coming tomorrow.
Right, but an Army Corps of Civil Engineers will look at your village as a project. And they would straighten out, they have eminent domain over anything.
We got a problem in the back of my yard, it blew the corner out. It was all rebar and rock and everything else in there, blew it right out. It's in my basement, a lot of it, blew a window out of my basement. I mean, this is more than just three and a half or four inches of rain the other day. This is a problem, a serious problem. If it doesn't get addressed, it's gonna happen again in a month. And if it doesn't happen, then it'll happen in the spring when the snow goes off. Just saying.
But I know the village is planning, not only to look at what's going on up there, but throughout the whole village, because we also got problems in southern part of the village.
We have to have, we have to have a non-biased committee. And I don't know if everybody in this room is or is not, I don't know who's in charge of what project or whatever. I'm just saying, we need some people with some outside interests that don't have any interest in any political field, or rather, they're working for somebody within the town and don't wanna burn somebody else because I'm a such and such a party or whatever. I just want answers. I want a solution on this thing, and I think it's within reach by making a proper phone call.
And we all want that.
Thank you.
Good job.
Can I speak?
Yeah.
Can I walk over here and say, and look at everybody?
Sure.
At least I can sit on this chair, I mean, every name. Do you understand anymore?
Simon Robin.
Simon Robin.
Simon Ginnrich. Sorry, I bet.
I'm Simon Ginnrich. We have a dairy farm on the Very Road, above the, little ways out on the Number Three Road. Um, uh, we had the first, fourth generation taken over. And, uh, we have four hundred acres. We have our whole farm tiled. And, uh, on a lot of these things, I know in the past, we have made a mistake. And Lawville has too, I'm very sure. Um, I don't know where to start. Uh, I know the drains in Lawville are a big problem, but how big was Lawville way back in eighteen ninety-two? When Lawville had more rain that year, more water than we have had so far this year? But if the rain keeps coming, we might overlap, overdo that. And eighteen ninety-two, Lawville didn't need the drains that they have to have now. And, uh, so, then, that time, it was a big flood too, for Lawville. And I have no complaints, by the way, no complaints. Um, my son just bought a house on, what street?
Stewart.
Stewart Street?
Mm-hmm.
Was that right? Uh, and he lives right by?
Or, I'm sorry, no. It's up on Sunset.
Huh? On Sunset?
Sunset, yeah, you're talking about, oh.
And what's the name of that other road?
Rice Road.
The Rice Road, right on the bottom of the Number Three Road, the Rice Road. The water comes out of that field like a river. And it comes right down across that road and into Lawville. And, uh, and them fields up the Number Three Road, they're saturated now. So when you get a big rain, all that water is gonna come right down into Lawville. And nothing can be done about it. Um, that land right there, on the left of going up the Number Three Road hill, the farmer that owns that, I don't know his name right now, but he rents that land. Well, there's things that, in order to crack this wa- this water problem, it needs to be corrected up above where the water's coming from. And very likely, very likely it won't happen because the owner won't let anybody correct that land. But what that land needs is, uh, dikes, a couple of dikes across the field, which would slow that water down, so it wouldn't come into Lawville the way it does. And on top of the Number Three Road hill and on the right, right past the water tower, you'll see a pipe out of the ground, about like that. And I think that, and I think Marty Byer just put that in maybe about last year. Uh, and on the, above Marty, uh, Marty Byer's land right there, there's a big field. All that water is coming down this way. He put that in, I think, to, to catch some of that water. But then from that pipe, from, from that pipe, the water is going around the water tower. And I don't know where it comes, but I think it's ending somewhere on top of the, uh, Lawville Hospital Hill. That's, that's where it's coming. And I think it's ending up there. And it's possible that that could be drained into, I don't believe the Lawville Hospital is the blame for having that water. The, the, the upper, the upper parking lot of the Lawville Hospital, this time was flooded. But I think that's where it's coming from. And that might be, it would be corrected if, if the village would ta- tap into that. You know, but again, it'll take, all this takes money, I understand that. And some things can't be done, but, but yet, I feel for the, I feel for the village, because we farmers, that's where we get our food. We sell it to Lawville, but we buy it back. I, I don't know if I have any more to say, but...
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I just got one thing. This was talked about here at the coffee shop the other day. You got people that worked for the DPW that's retired now, um, like Gene Palmer. He worked there from the sixties, seventies, eighties. You probably got half those people left still living. That you ought to talk with, or set a little meeting, committee meeting with, to pick their brains about what went on thirty, forty years ago with the water. Or why things were done the way they were, or they, or they should've been done a little bit differently. So, I think there's enough people around the left that can go back a long time and might have a little, uh, history.
All right, well, thank you. Mike Phell, I'm speaking. If, if I may, I'm just absorbing what everybody's saying. My name's Mike Phell, about Trinity Ave 5483. Where my yard is, um, it's near the Forest Ave intersection, and of course, it's the dip. I get everything from the school field. Uh, never have had that in twenty-four years I've lived there, never. Um, and we have had, as Mr. Dibble, I've, I've heard him talk a little bit, we have had some storms, twenty-four inches here and there. My concern is that January thaw, as Zeke said earlier, I get anxiety now I can't leave my house when I know the weather's gonna turn crap.
Same way you do.
And I'm guessing everybody here feels that way, like, no, I guess I can't plan a vacation if I wanna go somewhere, or I gotta have someone at my house. Like, that is the most uncomfortable feeling, which all you people, I'm sure, are feeling that over and on you feeling. I, I would ask Mr. Beagle and anybody else on the board that attends this meeting tomorrow with the entities, the state, the local guys, please express to them, we're progressing in the county, and I appreciate that. As Mr. Dibble said, we want the youth to come here, to stay here. You know, um, the, the hospital project, it's concrete and asphalt. Now, you can put as many drainage pipes in there as you want, but it's tagging into our village system. I could be wrong, Mr. Beagle, you can correct me if I'm wrong, or any other board member. Uh, I don't see a retention pond there, as this gentleman over here said to the left. If it was Bernie and Carr that did that project, maybe we need to go back to them and just say, "Hey, what are we doing? We need to do this over." And as Mr. Dibble said, everybody else here, Mr. Beagle, you said yourself in the beginning of the meeting, "Everybody beware, eight hundred twenty-one thousand the villagers spent already, we're paying those bills because they, we'll get three to five years on a reimbursement." Fingers crossed. Well, you're an entity, you're the local government here. What about us individuals? And as I always say, it's bad, because the ones who get penalized are the people that are working. I, I saw the form online, and my wife and I looked at it, "Hey, fill this questionnaire out, you may get something back." I always say, "Boy, where are the local, where are our local representatives from the government? Where's our representative congressman, our, our state senators, where are they?" Now, maybe some of them showed up and I'm unaware.
Maybe, in Rome.
Okay, in Rome, and Rome got whacked good. I, I went down there to work that area because of that, I saw the devastation, they needed it.
Well, they, they have been up here a couple times.
Okay.
There was a meeting down at the County Highway Garage, right after the July tenth. And then here, a week ago, there was another one up at Lawville Academy. And basically, the, the meeting, that meeting was where the state was up here. I think, you know what that one meant? And basically, they admitted to us municipal leaders that, that can't help you guys, but they, basically they said they were gonna make municipalities whole.
Yeah, as, as, uh, Mr. Ginnrich over there stated too, the fields up top, farmers gotta make a living, I'm all for it, they feed us. And I respect their profession. Seven days a week, they ain't getting a break, somebody gotta show up. But we need to discuss, maybe include those farmers that are working those fields, because the corn planted there is not absorbing it. And as that gentleman over there also said, hey, we need to talk to them and, hey, if you don't want someone to touch your field, but how about you help us down below? I mean, here we are, Lawville, I call it Lowville. That's the way it is right now for everybody. You know what I mean, I never thought I'd have to actually joke about it, but that's how I'm feeling. And, um, you know, if you guys could address that in that meeting tomorrow, the whole point of progressing, but at what point, the asphalt, the concrete that's there cannot absorb what's coming off that Upper Number Three Road? So what is, what is the engineers that did that project gonna do for us local residents? We have to fix this. As Zeke said, and, and Mr. Dibble, the thaw is coming. January's gonna come, we're gonna get rain. We've had two mild winters, as I recall, maybe even more, but consecutive. And, boy, I love it, the old RGA, I don't care for the cold and the snow. But the problem is, is if we get a while above an old winter again, and then we get the January thaw, like the old days, uh, I'm back to square zero again. Like, everybody's gonna feel it. So I, I would hope you take everything, and I know you guys will, that, that's your job, and you'll do the best you can. But that project up top, the hospital, before that was done, never in twenty-four years have I seen this problem. Never.
Me either.
And the drainage is there, but it's not enough. They didn't, they probably didn't expect, and as you say, cold or warming, whatever's causing this. We've got more rain coming than before. Someone sent me a text today, he said, twenty-five inches east of the Tall Hill Plateau in the last three months, that they saw the weather data spec. I don't know if it was sent to me. All I know is, okay, how do we compensate for that? Times are changing. And if that project wasn't compensating for the unexpected rainfall, we need to go back to the drawing board immediately, not like a month or two. We're, we're gonna pay, the village is gonna pay, and where they throw it back to? Us taxpayers. And you can't get blood out of stone. Everybody's getting taxed out here financially. New furnaces, new hot water heaters. My basement wall, today I got a mason guy over there, he's already starting to work on the basement. It's, it's already been compromised. Never has that been, that house is a hundred and twenty years old. I've had it twenty-four years, never once has that wall done that. In two sto- storms we've had, I've got problems now. So, I, I bent, just like everybody else. I bring those ideas up to you guys, and you've heard it from all these people. But that hospital project, I'm all for progress, progressing. But at the same time, please get the engineers involved and the farmers up top, 'cause we gotta do something. That piping is not sufficient enough for the system we have here in this village. That's gotta be the problem, part of it.
Well, how do you dare even refit your, your house when every time?
Well, I'm there now. I hate to do that.
I don't, I don't even dare fix it.
I know. No sense in spending the money. It's Mr., uh, well, he's, oh, there is Mr. Rose.
Plus I don't have, plus I don't have any...
The driveway property you're talking about. I know Travis Rupert lives up on, on, uh...
Irving City.
Yeah, yeah, up there in Fairview. Trying to put a nice new garage in. Every time it's washed out again. And I hate to see the DPW guys having to do their work like that. They're, they're probably out of their wits end. You know, I feel for all these people, all, Fire Department doing a great job, by the way, shout out to helping everybody. You know, you guys are tremendous, but please, just express these concerns tomorrow, 'cause we all can't make it. We're not invited anyways. But you're right, Mr. Beagle, the county, you're absolutely right, we need to go to the county board next.
We need to all work together.
All work together. Yeah. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Well, thanks everybody for coming.
Mayor.
You all on the stage?
Joe Austin.
You didn't say something, Joe?
Yeah, just... Um, so Mike brought up some, he brought up some statistics. I wanted to let everyone know, I did actually pull some statistics from, uh, National Weather Service. I figured I'd present them to you guys, so you can be aware of what we were looking at. So, already to date, in the month of August, so our normal rainfall in the month of August is two point six four inches. Already in the month of August, we've seen eight point five five. So, I mean, I know people say, we've had storms like this in the past. The numbers actually don't show that. They don't show that we've had a, a, a day where we got six inches of rain all at once. Um, same thing with July, the average for July is three point four eight. Last, or, last month, we received ten point six, total for the month, with six point zero two being the high point on that big storm that we got. Um, so again, just, just putting some facts out there to, to make, to make people realize that, yes, I do agree drainage probably needs to be addressed, but, uh, I think it was Mr. Ginnrich that said the ground is so saturated that the water just flows across the top of it. Unfortunately, again, like Mike said, we live in Lowville. We live in the low point, so it's gonna fill us first. How can we fix that? Yes, I agree, we need to figure out how to do that. Um, but I think, I ju- I just want people to remember that it, it is sort of a drainage problem, probably somewhat, but at the same time, with the ground being so saturated, I mean, I sat at the fire hall during all the storms and watched as twelve inches of water ran right down State Street. That, that's not a drainage issue, that's, uh, there was so much water in such a little amount of time that it had noers to go except the path of least resistance, which happened to be State Street. Then it flowed down into Jebbs, and then we had the issue with Jebbs. Um, so that was, that was that first storm we saw. Um, so, yeah, I just wanna know, I just, I wanted to know that we, that, yeah. I hear you, I understand you, speaking as a village resident, I'm, I'm lucky. I, I haven't had any issues, knock on wood, I hope I don't. My neighbors down the street have. I live right across from Travis Rupert. So, I, I've watched his poor, brand-new driveway get washed out every time. Um, and it's just, it's heartbreaking to see. Um, I do wanna thank you all for your kind words about the fire department. I will say they're giving their, giving their all every time. Um, I thank our neighboring departments for coming out. Um, so, and then just one last statistic before I sit down and be quiet. Um, again, Mr. Ginnrich had made note of nineteen, or eighteen ninety-three, that was the last time that Lawville saw this much rain in, in a one-month given period. So, I mean, none of us really know what happened back then. Now we have to deal with, hopefully, this is not gonna keep happening, but if it does, like I said, like you all have said, we do need to come up with a way to try to address it. But then I also have to remind you all of the cost of it too. We can't have our taxes going up to pay for it, and I don't have much, uh, confidence in the state or the federal government helping us. We can't have our taxes going up to pay for it, and I don't have much confidence in the state or the federal government helping us. That's just my own opinion, so.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, we'll move on with our regular meeting, and new business. The craft surcharges, the water, $20,000. Do we need a motion to approve that? Craft surcharges for sewers, $15,000, $50,000. On favor? Oppose? Brittany give us a list of budget amendments she'd like to do? Need a motion to approve those? So move, Mayor?
I'll second that.
On favor? Oppose? I have two formal surveys. First one, basically what I'm looking for is on each one, I'm looking at motions for me to be able to sign and approve it. The first one's for $1,200. This is to survey and map out all the property lines, get us new tax maps, with our boundaries and everything, down on Lawville County. We need to get this done for two reasons. One, we have a property over down there that thinks that space that we're leasing out is partially on their property, and we gotta make sure that we're where we're supposed to be. According to our maps, we are, they bring their surveyors in, we'll know for sure. We're also talking about putting in a brand-new ADA compliance walkway going down between the movie theater and the restaurant there. And where it comes out at the bottom, it may have to turn to the right, because part of it will be like steps for people that can walk with no problem, but then the rest of it's gonna be tiered landing. And working with the DRI project, they have a very good conceptual drawing of what we wanna do, but the bottom landing's gotta curve to the right, so we wanna make sure that's our property. So that's a reason for wanting to do that survey down there. So I need a motion to authorize me to sign that and send it back.
Also move.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And the second one is basically down at the sewer plant, where we're disposing of a certain section of property. I believe the board discussed this a couple meetings back. And Jim's gonna do a quick clean deed for us, but we need to get that section surveyed. And I'm not sure he's gonna have to do everything, you see, he's got title searches and attendance at planning board meetings and things. With a quick clean deed, I don't think he's gonna have to do any of that.
Correct. All, all the quick clean deed is, is whatever interest we possess in the property we're conveying out, but I've gotta have in there a description to do that.
So, the maximum for that's 3,500, but I'm sure it'll be coming in a lot less, because like I say, half of that stuff he's not gonna have to do, with Jim doing the quick clean deed. We need a motion to authorize that one, too.
I'll make a motion, will you authorize that?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Question? This will solve the issue at hand that we are discussing?
Yes. Once it gets the quick clean deed, that, that deal is over.
Okay.
We already have the, the other paperwork on already.
Oh, okay.
We've got 90 days to get him that deed. Okay, correspondence, Lawville Fire. Mainly it's the letter from them with their next year's budget for the town, for the villages of Lawville and all the towns, but we're getting the budget early, I know we, we don't pay our share until July, but the towns have to have this, because they're working on their budgets right now for next year. So, we did go up, up $2,400, $2,500, but everybody's costs are going up. The fire department's got some victims coming up.
Drop in the bucket compared to next year.
That's just, if anybody got any questions on that, holler at Joe.
Yeah, if they, if they pass the state laws, or the state rights that they wanna pass, yeah, that, that's gonna be nothing.
I know what my suggestion is, if they wanna do that, every fire department should say, you have carte blanche on such and such a date, and I think they'll back off. Enough is enough.
Just, it's all going, we're just so ridiculous, not even worth discussing. Anyway, carry on, Mr. Bell.
I'll make a motion for this budget, I'll make a motion.
Well, no, we don't have to do that, that's sister information. We don't make the motion till we actually sign the contract, but that won't be until July. July next year, not, not this year, we've already gone by. No, this is next year's budget, but we're getting it early, because the town has to have it, so they can do their budget. Because their budget comes through January 1st, and ours doesn't come due until June 1st.
To my knowledge, no one has had any issues yet.
But this is just what we'll be looking at in July, and we'll be doing the contract, then have to make the motion and stuff. Okay, Rayco updates. Any questions there? If not, we got Mickey sitting right here.
I have one question, Mickey.
Yeah.
We've been having some issues with our website. Could we get some information on you guys hosting our website, just to see what it's like?
Yeah, if, if you want, I can quickly address it right here in the report, because that's one of the things I'm doing. So the website stuff will be, we're planning on doing a training for all the communities that have their websites for Rayco, just to kinda learn how to post minutes agendas for some, and then talk about any other issues they have. So we're planning on doing that, and then the second part we're planning on doing is, we're gonna take a, like a little break in between, then reconvene, and at that point, we're gonna have somebody there to present about the ADA compliance for websites. It's gonna, there's new guy, federal guidelines that I think take place in 2027. So some of the communities have already started asking about that and preparing for that. So, we're gonna have somebody come talk about that. So, but yeah, if, related to websites, there's a couple things I can either talk to individually about what there is, or, you know, somebody, you wanna send somebody down to that training just to see what it's like, and talk to others who have platform, platform through Rayco, but there is no additional cost, so what you pay in your fees, that covers, you just get a website out of the deal. So some communities opt in to use the Rayco for that service, and others don't, which is fine. So, but it is there for any member to access, so.
So when is this training gonna be?
Well, I'm putting it together right now. I, I'm gonna be working through Bosse's, we'll probably have it down at Bosse's down there. So I'm just trying to feel it out for maybe, we'll try to do it maybe in the fall, when we can maybe have a lunch in between, so those who wanna maybe stay for lunch, we can do a lunch, and then, and then do that second part afterwards. So, I'll be talking to them and getting that information out. So probably by our next Rayco board meeting, I should have some, some info on there. I will just mention that our next Rayco board meeting is actually September 26, and that'll be at Town of Willman at 6 o'clock. And the Tugill Commission Annual Dinner that we have is September 19th, it's gonna be a little earlier this year. It's gonna be at the Hay Loft at Moonshine Farm in Port Liden. And I know you head on there, the Rayco Transportation Survey, which I see is there, so I just touched on that. So we are planning on, I think a draft went around everyone. So if there's any updates to the Rayco Transportation Survey for your community, please let, let Chris Barbosa know in our office. And then we're hoping to have that finalized for the Rayco board meeting. I mentioned the websites, here I mentioned LED lighting. The local government student activity program, that is still a go. Students have until October 1st to sign up for that. And we're, we're gonna be working, so Jillian, this is Jillian Lee, by the way, out of our program office there at Watertown. And so she's kinda taking the reins now and running with that, taking the lead, so give her all the work to do, and just follow up, but. So she's, I'm gonna coordinate that, we're gonna be meeting with Bosse's again here soon, to just kinda go over, we're putting together some presenters. And actually, some of the local government officials in the area might be, we might be reaching out to about presenting on that panel to the, to the students and stuff. So we're gonna start pulling that together. And then the other thing I'll just mention is that we have the Conference on the Environment, which is coming up, which is September 18th through the 20th. And that is actually, we're doing that in partnership with the New York State Association Conservation of Communities. Jillian is also heading that up, so again, it's a good meeting for her to come to, because she also has a meteorology degree, so she's looking up statistics on precipitation and things like that. So, yeah, she's heading that up, and that'll be going on, I believe, you wanna just speak just briefly about what the days are gonna be, there's three days?
Yeah, so the first day is September 18th, and that'll be a virtual day of presentations. They'll range from renewable energy to natural resources economy, the environment, and recreation and tourism. We'll also have a grant writing workshop later that afternoon. And then we'll have a couple people from the state talking about the 30 by 30 and 70 by 30 plan. And then later that evening, we'll have a social hour at the Woodland Farm Brewery and, in Boonville. And then September 19th, that Thursday, we'll have a day of field trips around the Boonville and Alliance Falls area. And later that evening, we'll have our Tugill Commission Annual Dinner and the conference reception. And then the, the first half of the day on Friday, September 20th, it'll be a field trip to Trenton Falls, that is gonna be open just for us for that time, that day.
There, you got the rundown on that, so thanks. And that's all I got. I see Joe's gonna go, I'm reaching out to the program, talk to them related to fire departments, because I just wanna think we're jumping out of response, and having somebody from that area on the panel, so. We're looking at doing some field trips, too, so, we'll talk to you.
Name your traffic condition, I thought that was quite interesting, the different crashes within the village in the days of the week.
Yes. Yeah.
All right, we got a nice letter from Mary and Harvey, they're thanking us for, basically, us doing the citizens of the year award. Did I get, see a copy of that?
Yep.
Then one other thing, I jumped to correspondence, but Dan, did you wanna bring cream cheese fests up tonight, or do we wanna put this on?
Well, we got a letter, and we don't meet again until right before this, so I think, I guess, I know there's been some concerns and questions, but I, I would, I would say that moving forward, with everything else going on, that I'd make a motion that we approve this letter as written. And so I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
The only thing I would say on that is, this letter's dated August 1st. We just got it today. In the future, and I'd go like Jeremy, you know, we need to get this information sooner, because they're planning on having their doings the 21st, and I believe our next board meeting only like two days before that, so. That's one reason Dan's bringing it up tonight, that we're gonna allow him to move forward like other years, we gotta prove it tonight.
Their communication needs some work, but.
I find that, I'm trying to say this, I'm gonna speak out loud, I find it ironic that they would call today to see if we got the letter, and neither one of you two's got it. And I've heard, I've heard other comments about, we've communicated, we've communicated, but yet, anybody I talked to, Mr. Beagle, or Mr. Austin, am I incorrect, when saying that that isn't happening? This goes on all the time, not just with, with that entity, but with, you know, we get stuff thrown at us, gotta prove it tonight. And my answer usually is, if you're asking me tonight, the answer's no, because I wanna be able to think about it, but if I'm asked, and I have time to think about it, usually it's not an issue. And that's all I got to say. But, if that being said, I'd make the motion, too.
Also, and that's not addressed in this letter, and Joe and I talked about it a little bit, is the, the huge freezer that's gonna be in that area, too, so. Compromise traffic a little bit, but it's not in this letter, you didn't address that, but you did with Joe and I a month ago, but.
It was also said to me that the village was okay with it. Well, we, when I had the discussion, I was all the same.
We talked about this the last month. Craft was being explained it.
Yeah, one of, one of the craft people explained what they wanted to do.
Nobody from the committee.
But no, that was a.
So, the last communication that, I think Joe probably too, since, that we've had with that committee, was a month and a half ago, at least?
I remember, Lee Hinkelman, probably a month ago. That was when we discussed the location of the, the refrigerator tent that I was told was okay by the village.
Has Mr. Paff and I ever come to one of our meetings, I can't even call or say anything to him.
I'll oppose you, then.
So you made the motion, who sent?
I seconded it.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
And just so the village does know, it's, it's gonna go behind the fire hall, it won't block any of our entrances. The generator will also go, it's gonna, I, I think the generator, because of how big it is, is gonna either go on the alleyway right between the barbecue pit and the fire hall, or right behind the barbecue pit. But it will be up, they're planning on setting it up at least a day, if not two days beforehand.
Two to three, no, yeah, I had the date, but it's bringing.
Just so the town, the village knows that's what's happening.
It's big.
Yeah, it's a big, big tent.
Gold tent, dude. Going for the record again.
For the record, what's the motion that was made?
You know, just to accept the letter that they sent up with their plan.
Which, we don't have a problem with them. They gotta go to DOT to shut down North State Street, but the village doesn't have a problem with it. All right, I got a few things here. First thing I have is, I got a letter from Public Health. Basically, September is suicide prevention month. They claim that Lewis County has the highest sewer, suicide rate in New York State. What they would like to do, and the size, I think she told me, be about 18 by 24, something like that, up in, by the fountain, they'd like to put a small sign up in September, basically talking about suicide prevention month. And we do have no signs in that park, but I believe there is a provision in our law that the board can approve certain signs if they want, so I'm asking tonight.
Temporary sign, correct?
Right, it'd be like for the month of September at the most.
Right.
So, if the board's agreeable, I just need a motion to do that, and then I can call her tomorrow and tell her it's okay.
I'll make a motion, will you approve that, time?
Temporary.
Temporary sign? I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The other thing I have, Jim Burles passed out, intermissible agreement for the provision of recreation services between the town and the village of Lawville, I think maybe it was a July meeting? I know it was a while back. And we did look at it, and I think everybody at the meeting didn't have a problem with it, but we did not make the motion for me to sign it. The town has signed theirs, and I saw a copy of it today, which he will give us a copy, but I need a motion to authorize me to sign our copy to give to the town, so we each have a copy. I'll have a copy of theirs, I'll have a copy of ours.
So I'll make a motion, you sign it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, and we, I don't really think, we need, this is mantle, we may have some things to say on this. But we've kinda been looking at, going back to drainages, and we're looking at two areas of the village. One is up there, our existing drains that come down through everybody's property on Fairview Drive and some up in that area, of actually getting those lines, have to go down our own streets, and size to the proper size. down our own streets, and size to the proper size, just to get rid of them. And on the southern end of the village, where we got problems over there by Hemlock Drive, to come down behind Kraft and, and make some changes over there. And so, basically, Paul and I asked Matt to give us a rough estimate of, basically, you're dealing with survey work, uh, review data on plans, uh, check out specific areas for pipeline, have we, existing plates we had to hammer on and see what's left, bring in a hydrologist and do hydraulic calculations for the areas, we gotta do three reports, submit to Homeland Security and respond to any of their comments, and then do all the storm water as built, uh, because FEMA will pay for this engineering study if we have a project up and ready to go. And the total cost would be a hundred and seventy thousand, so I just want the board to be thinking that over, and I can get you a copy.
When you say they're paid for it, is that a three to five year deal?
That's another three to five year deal.
I like the gentleman's name about going to the Army Corps of Engineers. I, I just don't see how we can...
Well, no, that's already been talked, well, Vinnie, yeah, Vinnie was, we, this, that was discussed last, in the last week, or Friday, we were talking about that. So, I mean, we're trying to bring it outside help, but I mean, this is like...
So, Joe, that's a, that's a study much like we do for a water sewer project, we're gonna look at it, we're gonna come up with alternatives and proposed solutions. I don't know the answer. I, I've heard a lot of, of concerns, right, you know, the hospital, the farm fields. I think what we're gonna find is, it's a little bit of all those things, and I don't think there's gonna be a smoking gun that, oh, that, there it is, right? Well, and we pull the rock out of the way and, and it's fixed, right? I think it's going to be a combination of things. You have aging infrastructure, we've, we've all known that, that's not a new comment. You know, steel, steel culvert pipes, right? Most of the time, there's no bottom left in them. So, now you're, now you're ripping water through it at, at a super high rate, and, and you saw on Hemlock, big rocks like this getting pushed around and shoved into the pipes. That's probably happening in underground and you don't even know it, right? I mean, it's, it's, um, I think you're gonna find that it's multiple things that are going on that, that happen, it's not, it's not one thing. You know, those drainage areas are several square miles, they go up past the water tower, I mean, they're, the one in the Tops Plaza, you know, coming down Tops Plaza, that's, we've been, in our office, we've been calling that the Martinsburg Drainage Area, right? I mean, everything comes down that hill to Tops Parking Lot.
Our constituents tonight, did they expect something? My concern is, no matter how accelerated this is, and how accelerated we do it, how accelerated we pass them, we're gonna, we're gonna have rainstorms between now and the time. We hopefully get this as correct as possible, and I'm deeply concerned, uh, I'm deeply concerned about how we're going to do it, who's gonna fund it, uh, because we're, we're gonna exceed our bonding capacity very quickly.
Well, that's why, Dan, I'm bringing this up tonight, but I don't really want to bullock tonight, because I want a chance to sit down with Paul and Brittany and go through our reserves and wanna see where we can get this funding, because there again, this is would have to be...
This stuff can't be a three to five year deal. This stuff.
The, uh, the, that proposal, Joe, we, we talked about FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant is a program that FEMA has. The idea is, they have money available, from, from what I, from what we gathered at the meeting you had, you talked about it at the Highway Department, there's money available to fix, to repair the immediate, you know, the, the bridge washed out, you need to replace it, the, the pipe washed out under this gentleman's garage, you need to reroute that. There's money for that, that comes as a reimbursement, and then they're, they have other programs, they call them hazard mitigation grants, there's a flood mitigation grant, there's a hazard mitigation grant. Those are, are more like your water and sewer grants that you go after where you apply for it, and it's a selection process. The, the, you know, the governor declaring a state of emergency allows you to be eligible for FEMA to, to reimburse you. I think the, I think the federal government has to approve that, but there, there's a process, you're in the middle of that. Repairing what you've done, the money you've spent, that, that's a reimbursable expense, that, you know, collecting that data, that, that's what you guys, you're, you're already starting that. This study, this, this, you know, is a, is also a reimbursable expense, but it's, it's, you know, when you're gonna get it, Dan, is, is, you know, and I'm not gonna tell you the Corps of Engineers isn't sitting there ready to answer your phone call, but they're not, we all know.
One thing that wasn't brought up, the constituents, Joe, is, even though we get reimbursed by FEMA, the interest is not reimbursable, so we're looking at thirty thousand dollars. So, next year's budget is gonna be extremely painful, and as I look at next year's budget as one, one board trustee, there's two questions, is it a want or is it a need? If it's a need, it's gonna have to happen, if it's a want, like summer rack, you know, we've, we've batted that thing around, and who's gonna do this and that? I, we're not gonna be able to do it next year, it's that simple. Thirty thousand dollars just for the interest, so, and, because nobody cares more about you than, than I do, I've been involved with it for forty years, but I realize right now that we're gonna have to make some real painstaking decisions, and that's gonna be the first one, and it might as well be said now, so that we're not debating about it next January or February. I don't know if the rest of the board feels that way, I do, so, thank you, Mary.
And, and if you do have any questions on that, I mean, we, you know, like I said, we've been talking to Paul and Joe about it, we've looked at it a couple of different ways to how to, how to, you know, I guess, answer the question that, that you, you need answered to, to be eligible for additional source, funding sources, right, I mean, that's what you're trying to, you're trying to get reimbursed for this.
We need a Google...
This study will be a part of that process. I'm sorry?
We need somebody that knows how to go about getting that.
Yeah, no.
I think, I think, I think you, I think you guys have that, I mean, you, you're dealing with funding all the time. The, the three to five years is, is what they told them at the meeting. You know, it's, I don't, no, that's a, that's a FEMA number, I didn't, we didn't, we didn't come up with that based on any of our experience, that was what they said.
I remember when they say the same thing at that meeting at the school the other night.
I believe you said, yeah.
Give it about three to five years.
But I thought this is...
The people right from the state that deal with FEMA.
But, but they also said they have piles of money that they might be able to help us with, those two ladies.
The commissioners, yes.
But we have to talk to them. We have to get engaged with people.
Sorry. And Dan, we're, we're talking, or Joe and, and Pat from our office met with, uh, the Department of Homeland Security, that's who administers that for, with, along with FEMA, that, that's your representative that she's talking about. You have one identified for the village, um, and they're working in conjunction with the, the county and I think the school.
And we had to send them all the numbers already.
Yes.
So, they would meet the threshold and fair stuff.
Yep. I think, unless anybody has any questions.
Sorry, Jan, I went right by you, you got anything for us? Do you have anything?
The May Treasures Report is in the packet, the AED was filed, and the clerk will send you a copy when she returns.
Chief of Police, anything, or do you want executive session later?
Oh, yeah, that's, I was just talking to him, if we can do that for personnel issues, yes, at the end.
Do you have anything else?
Uh, nope, just a couple of quick things, the fair went very well, we had minimal complaints. Um, the recruit that we have in the police academy, she's at the halfway point, and she's doing very well, I get, uh, weekly emails from the lieutenant there, she's doing great. Um, the new officer started last week on his twelve hour shifts, everything seems to be going good with him. Entire department will go to range qualification on September 11th, and then, uh, national night out is this Friday at Fairgrounds, we will be participating in that, 5:30 to 7:30, and so far, with the new child ID machine, we have generated around three hundred and eighty child IDs, which, that does not include this Friday night, so, that's all.
Paul, you still on the phone?
Oh, yeah.
Did you have anything you wanted to say to anybody?
Yeah, I got a few things, uh, you know, it's been talked about the water system and everything, I just, I wanna say what a great job the chief department and the DPW guys did, and they are still doing, first months twenty-four seven, they've helped us out immensely, so I give them tons of credit. My guys have been out there, my Sam Moore, my foreman, is right on top of things, we are in the process of trying to fix areas that we can fix. Uh, down at the Ross Road, we're putting in a couple of culvert pipes alongside the box culvert thing that's there, to hopefully eliminate any water going over the Ross Road. We've done repairs on Stewart Street, um, you know, if they're still public there, the last couple of years, we've been, out of our money, we've been up trying to replace some of that line that comes down from the Two Shacks Field. Uh, we've probably got maybe a, I would say, half of it done, it's all in plastic, but we can only do as much as we can do. Yeah, so, I mean, Darryl, your guys did a great job, my guys do a great job, and just to let the public know, we're out there, myself and Sam are out there twenty-four seven. We're, anytime it rains, you know, I get that bad feeling in my stomach, like last night. Yeah, last night, my father had passed away yesterday, we got that heavy rain, I had that bad stomach feeling when we got that heavy rain. I went out, and I went every street in the village and looked at it. I'm trying to figure out what's going on, how we can correct the problem. I don't believe this is a, I don't believe totally this is a village issue, there's other entities involved. Um, hopefully tomorrow at our meeting, we can get, get down to the bare bones and figure out what we can do. You know, I feel bad for the residents, I mean, I've seen almost everybody's house, so, yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Paul, you still there?
Yeah.
So sorry to hear about, so sorry to hear about your father, and everything that you're going through right now, I appreciate your, your dedication.
Thank you.
Capital and future planning, anything?
No report.
Personnel? Do you want to, executive session, anything else?
Personnel.
Finance?
I don't have any, you Dan?
No.
Third, two?
Please, it's fire department, okay, go.
Well, Phil's already covered everything.
Do you have anything more, Joe?
Nope, good.
Please keep fire up, anything different that we didn't know? Planning zoning board?
No.
No report.
Municipal board?
Went to the meeting last week, was about half an hour, one and a half, pretty good.
Town?
That's why I speak again.
The only thing I want to say on the town is, normally they have a meeting after us, but their meeting came before us this year, or this month, so please, when we're done here tonight, don't everybody run, help me put the tables and chairs away.
Jan, uh, the one, the one resolution, you're gonna talk with Bob in the morning, or do you want me to?
I will.
Thank you.
I'm gonna need to get a copy of it, email from Wednesday. Resolution on Veterans Park, we did tonight.
Yeah, we go, yeah, we did that, you just gotta get it to your, send it on.
We gotta get a, something right for them.
Hey, county?
Uh, I watched, I didn't actually attend the meeting, I watched it, uh, video watched it, but nothing to do with the village.
Recreation, I just have one thing, I don't know if you, you might have something there, but the solar people over there, I mean, we combined our recreation, we worked with Krogan and Freeman this year, we did get a, and we got the check last week, we got fifteen thousand towards our recreation program this year from them, and so far, the village has spent, not counting us fifteen thousand that just came in, we've spent eighty thousand dollars on summer rack, and we haven't got the final bill yet, so we're estimating it to be about a hundred and twenty-two thousand total. But it took in, I got all the logistics, I do know we had two hundred and fifty-seven kids this year from not only the town and village of Laubel, but a surrounding area, but ninety, I'm hearing ninety of those children were from the village of Laubel, but they will be getting me the final report, we'll have all that breakdown. You have anything on that, Preck Dan?
No, um, I think you covered it well, so there's nothing more I need to say.
We already heard on Rayco. I guess that brings us down to, does anybody have any public comments that we didn't get addressed before? If not, we need a motion going to executive session.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Personnel.